We'll go ahead and call this meeting of April 7, 2014, for the City Council to order at this time. If you all would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spoolman?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Unless, is that okay?
Are there no needed changes or anything, updates to the agenda tonight?
Okay.
Support?
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
And at this time, we'll open the public comments. The first public comment here at the beginning of the meeting is for anyone who would like to address the council in regards to anything that's on the agenda this evening. If you're going to come forward, if you would please write down your name and address and state your name and address for us, we would really appreciate that. No one at this time? Okay, we'll move on then, thank you. And then we have the consent agenda to be approved. We have the minutes from our regular meeting on March 17, along with a work session that was held on March 17.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support?
Sandy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Spoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
And tonight, we have a proclamation. And there are some little people here tonight. The proclamation that we have this evening is proclaiming April as the month of the young child. Who do we have here? Did you say Maximilian?
Yeah, Maximilian. Full name?
I'm Maximilian Evers.
Oh, hi Maximilian.
You don't have to. You don't have to.
You don't have to.
That's freaky. It's fun to talk in a big event.
And who? I have a garbage bag here. Who is going to receive the proclamation?
That'll be Nikki.
Is it all right, Marcus, if we turn this microphone off?
Sure, yeah. No, it shouldn't be that.
Just don't step on the card. Come stand by me.
Okay. It's a great idea, Max. Are you Max or Maximilian?
Max.
Okay, Max, it's a great idea. Here we go. The city of Cadillac, this is the city of Cadillac, mayoral proclamation. Whereas young children are the future of our community, and whereas one-third of children entering kindergarten in Michigan lack some of the skills needed for success, and whereas success in school is highly predictive of success in adult life, and whereas young children and their families depend on high-quality programs that provide for their care and education, and whereas the city of Cadillac wishes to join with the Wexford-Mesaki area Great Start Collaborative and its members, member agencies in the celebration of April as the month of the young child. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that April 2014 is declared month of the young child. In the city of Cadillac and all citizens are invited to duly note this occasion. This is pretty hard. Whoa.
Please get that response in the minutes. Whoa.
It was nice to meet you, Maximilian. You're welcome. The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing in regards to considering the approval of the 2015-2019 capital improvement program.
Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much for this opportunity to present the 2015-2019 capital improvement program. Our finance director is making his way to the podium. This is a recap of what the City Council discussed in the work session the last time you met. And here before you is Owen Roberts.
Want to turn the microphone?
Yes. Turn it up?
We can share.
There you go.
Should've been six of those.
We're good.
That's just a copy of what's gonna be on the screen so that you can all read it and make any notes, if you want to make any notes. I'll be brief, but tonight, we're just gonna talk briefly about the 2015 to 2019, which is five fiscal years, the capital improvement program. So why do we do the capital improvement program? And this is for the sake of the members of the audience here and for those who may not have participated in the process before. But really, we do this as a planning tool. So we look out five years to try and identify the most significant capital projects that we'll be faced with trying to fund over the next five years. And we usually have an idea of a little bit longer than that, but in terms of getting it into this program, we're looking at about five years of planning. We also do it for a scheduling and coordination standpoint. These two really go hand-in-hand, especially as it relates to infrastructure like water and sewer pipes and streets. The last thing we want to do is tear up a new street to replace old water and sewer infrastructure below it. So we try and coordinate, from a scheduling and coordination standpoint, doing streets and doing water and sewer infrastructure. That's primarily a big benefit from what we get from doing this five-year program. The kinds of projects that flow into this specific program is a physical asset or a major piece of software with a cost over $7,500, which coincidentally is the City Council's spending threshold. So that's kind of what we used as a gauge to set the cost of the plans that fall into this program, with a useful life of greater than one year. So as they all filter through here, you'll find projects like streets and the coordinating water and sewer pipes and equipment and infrastructure, projects here at the municipal complex, other special projects like projects in the park system or other kinds of recreational projects, vehicles, including service trucks, police vehicles, fire apparatus, any kind of vehicle like that, and other heavy equipment like plows, front-end loaders, tractors, and the heavy equipment that you see on the street doing city repairs and maintenance. As an important note, all projects are simply proposed, as you know, by this plan. They're not actually approved for going forward or for funding in this program. These projects, then, need to flow through the annual budget process to actually be carried out. The five-year proposed project cost by activity looks like this. These next couple of slides will look a little busy, but I wanted to get this important information in here. Complex administration, those are just general kinds of projects. It's 1.2 million nearly. The most significant projects in that category are gonna require some pretty substantial grants and donations to carry out. Public safety projects, fire, one major piece of apparatus is in this five-year plan. A couple of projects in the parks. $3.2 million total between the major and local street system, projects in the cemetery and in the industrial park. And the most expensive category typically each year is the water and wastewater system. There's a lot of pipe in the ground and a lot of equipment that it takes to get stuff out and stuff back in. Primarily within that category is Phase Two of the well field, which we'll talk about in just a minute. Stores and garage, that's our fleet fund, so a lot of heavy equipment you'll see in that category for a million and a half dollars. And then technology projects as well. Just to summarize that in a little bit different of a way, building projects and repairs, cemetery equipment, heavy equipment, industrial park, and down the line, you can read those for yourself. But those are the kinds of projects that you'll see. 152 total projects comprise the $13.2 million in proposed spending over the next five years. To dig into a little bit of the detail that's in the plan, one of the most noteworthy sections typically each year in the capital improvement program are which streets have made the list. So that list for year one, as the many people I'm sure will celebrate this one, Lake Street from Chapin to Pollard. I don't believe that that project requires any further justification than simply taking a drive down that street, and it's in really, really bad shape. And a difficult winter has not helped. That's an expensive section of street, estimated at a cost of $200,000, with about $50,000 to replace the utilities underneath there. That's the only street project that's in the major street fund at this point. And right now, we do have actually reserves on hand sufficient to do that project. So we're looking at using some of those to fund that construction. In addition, a section of Everett Street, Holly Road, East Garfield, Simon, Selma, and Aldrich. And we are going to propose to continue our street sign replacement project. The major street side is getting very, very close to completion on those, replacing the old green signs with the really nice blue ones. The local street side, I believe there's still a project for each year as we try and wrap that up as well. There are 40 miles of local streets and 20 miles of major streets. So that's why it takes a little bit more time to do the local streets. Phase Two of the well field relocation, that's the most significant project in terms of cost that's in the plan. $2.8 million, about 20% of the whole program is related to the final phase of the well field relocation project. There's some estimates of the breakdown in those costs. Those are simply estimates at this point, and those are subject to change as the situation arises, depending on the cost of the property and the actual costs of the facilities and equipment and everything related to that. If you recall, we budgeted about $3.5 million for Phase One, and total cost came in about $1 million less. So we think we're in the ballpark, just as far as total cost goes, but as far as how those will break down is yet to be determined. A couple of other projects, just to highlight. Finally, in this year, we are proposing replacing a front-end loader with a snow bucket. This will be in our public works fleet fund. The cost of that is about $200,000, actually, but we have one that we can either sell outright or we can trade in. We've been told that that one's worth about $30,000 on a trade-in value. We are looking at some attractive lease options as far as this particular piece of equipment goes. We do have two of these loaders that would give us one that we would have still in our fleet to have year-round, and then kind of a nice new one each year as we look to lease, perhaps on that. We're estimating right now it would cost us about $14,000 or $15,000 per winter to lease one of these. So, you know, doing the math, that would give us 12 or 13 years of lease payments for what the cost of one of these loaders would cost. So when you kind of compare those, it makes that lease option, at least for one of the units, pretty attractive. So we're gonna probably at least release that out for bids and see where we come back with that.
Owen, the lease option, too, just to clarify, was for a unit that had as good, if not better, specifications as well as what we were looking at purchasing, correct?
Correct, yep, yep. A little bigger than the one that we'll be selling. Additionally, there's a project in here to upgrade the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion. This is one of the projects that will be very reliant on grants and donations. The Rotary has been very, very generous historically in our community for these kinds of projects. In fact, that's why it's called the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion. And they've pledged another significant sum of money, not the whole $500,000, at least not yet, but a good chunk of money to at least get the first phase of this project moving. So we look forward to enhancing what I believe is a very, very important asset in our downtown and parks system. Another project that's in the plan for the second year that will really stand out on top of the hill is repainting of the water tower. And I meant to have exactly when it was repainted the last time? Jeff, do you remember?
It's been over 17 years.
17 years. So it's been a long time that it's been that color and that font, which we trust will maybe be enhanced through this process. But obviously, that's a very expensive project. And I think that's kind of inside and out as far as that project goes. So the outside is obviously the easy part. The inside, they're currently taking volunteers to see if anybody wants to do that job. And that part will obviously be the very tricky part. They'll have to drain it, so the tower will be down for a short period of time. So there's some logistical concerns from the water delivery standpoint that need to be addressed prior to that taking place. And that's part of what makes that such an expensive endeavor. Finally, we want to, we need to start looking at getting an update of our snowplow fleet as well. Our newest plow truck in our fleet is a 2006, and we have several of these trucks. And so, you know, your newest one being almost nine years old already, it really is time to start looking at these. I think we've done a good job in our maintenance department with our mechanic and some other services that we've done in getting the optimal life out of these vehicles. But they don't last forever. And I think if you estimate it, a 10- to 15-year lifespan on these kinds of equipment with the kind of use that we put on them and the wear and tear that each winter has on them, we have, I think, extended their life very admirably. And though it's time that we need to start looking at how we're gonna replace those. So the funding for that, as with anything these days, it seems, will be a challenge and is something that we're already working on, trying to identify how we're gonna update the fleet from the plow truck standpoint. The primary challenges to the plan, obviously, funding. We need to continue to look for consistent sources of funds to finance these plans. Obviously, these are very costly. Obviously, also, funds are declining, as we talked about earlier tonight in the budget work session. So we need to continue to work at that. Can we find some budgetary money to set aside each year in a capital improvement fund? We need to utilize creatively some debt financing as we're talking about doing this year for street projects. Prioritizing these purchases and projects is very important. It's very challenging and difficult at times, yet it does remain highly important. And these other threatened sources of funding. Fortunately, some of the street funds have started to recover, and we're hoping to see the same from some of our other primary revenue sources, just so that we can keep a well-maintained and efficient fleet of city equipment. That's all that I wanted to highlight for tonight, just in terms of next step. We have had a chance to talk about this with a council work session last month, where we set this public hearing tonight. And we're holding that for the purposes of both council discussion and input from any members of the public that may have comments. This document is available on the city's website, and so we invite people to download it and take a look at it and still participate with anything that they would like to suggest. We are asking council to consider approval of the document tonight. Again, it's not a, this is not a required step. It's not something that we're legally obligated in any way to do, something that we've just simply used as a planning document. But we have taken the step of having council approve it each year to make it kind of official. At that point, then, the projects that you'll find in year one would typically, as best as funding will allow, then flow down into the annual operating budget. So with that, I'll flip off my presentation, and I'll sit down and welcome you to ask any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Owen. Thank you. Bye, girls.
I have a question, Owen.
Okay.
In regards to the leased vehicle, we would just be leasing it for the winter months?
Yeah, good question. You can rent those on a four-month or five-month basis. There's a little bit difference in cost. But yes, you turn that back in at the end of each year and then get either the same vehicle refreshed or an updated vehicle then each year, which would be one of the advantages of doing that. There are some hours restrictions, which will be another part of our evaluation.
And so then, the second question that I have in regards to lease, should something happen to the vehicle while we're running it? Are we responsible for the maintenance and insurance on that vehicle or the leasing company?
We would be responsible if we broke something, for sure. So if something broke while it was in our hands, we would be responsible for fixing it. Now, if it was a warranty item or something like that, then, you know, they maintain ownership of the vehicle. So I assume that, you know, I've never seen a lease contract for this kind of equipment, but that's something that we would look at pretty closely to see what exactly would be our responsibilities.
What would be covered?
Also, regular maintenance, oil changes and things like that. We're responsible for keeping up with their required maintenance program. So there will be some maintenance costs, but...
I was just gonna add that. I would also, using the word assume, I would assume we would be responsible for holding liability insurance as well as we would for any vehicle we have.
I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
I need to have a question. It might be Mr. Petcher or Mr. Roberts. But I know last summer, we had to have a special meeting with the road commission. And I want to be careful if I say that if it's a urban boundary district or whatever, where they expanded it. And I was thinking one of our projects this year was gonna be funded, where we were gonna be doing a rotating for some grant dollars.
You're referring to the small urban fund that last year, the state expanded the boundaries, and we did have a meeting in which we needed to basically sign off on that expansion. We were planning on receiving funds for fiscal year 2015, as that would have been the regular rotation of the cycle for the funding. And in fact, perhaps using the Lake Street project as our project of choice for 2015 for those $51. The state, however, decided about a month, maybe a month and a half ago, to release a re-release of funding yet for this year for projects. The road commission has a project already designed and ready to roll, whereas we do not. Therefore, they're gonna most likely receive funding that has been re-released now through that process this year for one of the county projects versus the county not receiving anything. The city still has the Lake Street as a slated project for those grant dollars for next year. Whether or not that happens and the state re-releases money again, we don't know yet. If they do, then we're gonna help use those dollars to offset the costs for the project next year. If they don't, and we have to wait another year, we'll be able to slate in a different project and then use those dollars for a city-centric project.
So we're not losing out on having to wait through the whole cycle again? It's just gonna be off a year? We'll get the, we'll still get that grant?
That's my hope, is that it'll be off a year. We don't know until they decide.
You probably explained it. So we were scheduled to have it for 2015, but since they re-released funds, we don't?
They sent a letter saying, they being the state, sent a letter saying, guess what? We have additional money left over, and we're gonna offer it to our communities across the board if they have projects ready to go. We do not have one ready to go. Road commission did.
And that still affects our 2015?
It could. There's no set policy as to when you receive money. You may receive money on an annual basis. You may receive money on a bi-annual basis. And if you look at a trend of how often money has been released, it seems to be every couple of years. So I don't want to definitively tell you or anybody that we're gonna definitely have money released next year, because I don't know. Likewise, I don't want to say it's not gonna be until fiscal year '16, because I don't know that either. It's not something that's under our control as to when they'll release those funds or determine whether our project should be funded or not. But if they do release the funds, we will have a project ready to go. And if they don't, and we have to wait an extra year, again, we'll be able to slate whatever project we need to slate in order to get it. Does that help?
Well, as I wanted, I know we were, that was one of our concerns when we did that, was that we weren't gonna lose out on grant dollars. And I just wanted to make sure. I had heard something to that effect, you know, outside here, and I thought, I was trying to figure out what exactly it meant in terms of if we're gonna lose out on that and then not get it for another four or five years or how that's gonna work. So they just basically can decide. We had a project for Lake Street, but they just decided they wanted to do another one instead.
Well, I'm not sure if I said it clearly. I apologize if I said anything confusing. The state re-released additional monies this year. City of Cadillac did not have a project ready to go at all. Road commission did. Instead of seeing no money go to Wexford County, the decision was that the road commission should at least still have their project move forward. The year that we had expected to receive money was 2015. Whether or not the state re-releases money again in 2015 is something we don't know yet. Looking at how they trend, they seem to do it every couple of years, but they already changed that trend this year by doing it now versus by waiting until 2015.
But you were, but Lake Street was on for 2014.
2014 calendar year, 2015 budget year.
But theirs is in that calendar year, then?
Whose is?
So the fund, it's getting more complex. You just said the funding was for this year, which is 2014, and this project was gonna be done in the summer for this year. I can talk to you about it later.
Well, no, no.
I just, I just wanted to make sure we're not missing out on grant dollars if that was...
We don't have a project. That's the problem.
And I think maybe if you guys can talk offline and just talk about the timing of how it all happened. It sounds as if we had it in the 2015 plan, and they released funds sooner than we anticipated they were going to release funds.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
All right. Okay. Did anybody else have questions for Owen? Do we have anyone out there in the... Do we have anyone out there in the audience this evening that would like to ask any questions about the capital program?
Hi, everybody. Ruth Ann French, 119 Marble Street. I talked with Owen, I think, last summer regarding a project at the end of Marble Street where Marble, where there's a crossover onto the bike path, and it's a bit of a safety concern there. It's a small project. All we need is signs and some painting on the street. And then I found out talking to Owen, it's really not that simple. You have to have curb cutouts and the angle has to be changed a bit for that crossing. But I would hope that with this new budget, that we would have the money to be able to do that for the safety of those users that walk across Sunnyside to access the bike path on the other side of, at the end of Marble Street. Because what happens is the traffic coming around the curve on Sunnyside does not realize it. I mean, if you're from Cadillac, you might know, but there's no warning signs as there is further down at the crossing on Sunnyside for the bike trail. So I just think that somewhere along the line, hopefully you'll, there'll be money in the budget for that small project. And while I'm up here, I might as well talk about sidewalks. I know you mentioned streets, but, and I know there has been some past discussion about increasing sidewalks in neighborhoods where we don't have them, and so I'm making my plug for Pearl Street. I see a lot of people walking in the street on Pearl Street. You've got quite a few apartment complexes there where people don't have cars. They walk down to Glenn's or wherever, and, but Pearl Street has no sidewalk availability, and so I would hope that maybe our sidewalk project is somewhere in your budget plans for capital improvements. Thanks.
Thank you.
Interestingly enough, council's gonna be considering an item later on in the agenda to award some construction bids, and part of that is that project for the sidewalk across Sunnyside to connect to the White Pine Trail.
Perfect.
And we had gotten a verbal commitment from MDOT that they would, because that's MDOT's road.
Right.
And so what you have is you have a street kind of going this way and a sidewalk going this way, and they won't allow that, so we have to bring the sidewalk around and square it up to the road and then go across the road. So as long as we get a follow-through on a verbal to help with that, I think we're gonna be able to take a look at doing that part of that project. So, yeah, coincidentally enough, yes, yes.
Yay!
Signage and paint was not gonna, not gonna be...
Yep, they wouldn't, yeah, like she said, she's exactly right, that they wouldn't allow just paint some additional crosswalk and put some signage up. They wouldn't allow that.
Good. Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? Okay. If nothing else from the council, then we'll close the public hearing. And look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2015-2019 capital improvement plan.
Thank you.
Support?
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spoolman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have communications.
The first is a request from Janet Gibson for a street closure on Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from noon to 4:00 p.m. on April 19, 2014, for the annual community egg hunt.
Is there anybody here from the J.C.s?
Sure.
Did you want to say anything?
My name's Cassandra Borisma, 211 Robertson Street. So we're looking at just closing a section of the road down for the Easter egg hunt that they've done annually. Janet couldn't be here today. And so we have the fire truck also coming and a couple of emergency vehicles, a bounce house. So it's kind of gonna be busy, and we're just looking at closing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we have a motion to approve the closure?
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on April 19, 2014, for the annual community egg hunt. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
That's usually the fastest event in the park.
Yeah. They're out and they're gone.
All that work.
A minute or two.
Yeah, it goes from 12:00 to 12:05.
The next request is actually from Councilmember Spoolman. It's to display a banner from May 12, 2014, to June 2, 2014, for the MSU extension and 4-H.
I'd like to ask to refrain from this vote since I'm the requister.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to allow Councilmember Spoolman to abstain from this vote.
Support? Keep it silent, I was gonna watch you.
All right. And then we need a motion to display the banner?
Well, first we have to vote on that.
Roll call on that.
Oh, I apologize. Roll call on that first, Sandy, please.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Now we need the motion.
Then I will make a motion to approve the display of a banner from May 12, 2014, to June 2, the same year, for the MSU extension slash 4-H.
Thank you.
Support?
Thank you. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
It's nice of her to pay $500 for that, too.
Really?
It's their centennial celebration. 100 years of extension.
Wow.
That's amazing.
Next up is the yarn bomb on Mitchell program. This is brought by Joy Van Dree, and, I don't know, is anyone here? Is anyone here this evening?
Joy is not here this evening. Is anyone here in her stead? No? Okay.
What is it that we're approving by approving this?
We can speak to it. This is something that's brand-new. This has not occurred yet in Cadillac. It has occurred in some larger cities across the country and in your packet. There are some examples of what it may look like. And I'll show you, just if you can look up at me really quick, here they are, in color, what it may look like. Basically, staff has gone out, has met with Joy Van Dree, has looked at infrastructure within our downtown core area that would be, I'll use the word suitable, but marked to have people come out and tag it with yarn or some other, like vinyl-colored material for the purposes of beautifying the area. We, again, have not experienced this type of program before. We're certainly a little concerned with respect to how it may go over, given our climate, but we're willing to give it a shot if City Council would also concur. We are gonna make sure and require that they take it down at the end. I'm not sure, Sandy, if you have any more information on the program other than what's in the packet?
Not other than what's in the packet, no.
Bruce, or Tara, from your meetings?
Nope.
No jury?
I've seen these in other communities. They're great. I just wondered exactly what it was we were approving other than conceptually, but, yeah.
Well, that's, you know, and that was it, too. We, you know, you're, we don't have a closure of a street, which is something the council would approve, but, you know, we also have never had anyone ask us to come and essentially cover up our streetlights and benches and trees with material and other devices, the yarn or the vinyl or whatnot. We wanted to make sure that council was on board.
It needs to be a yarn bomb or a yarn bomb.
I think it sounds awesome.
I do, too. A lot of people participate. Birds might use some of it for nesting. I'm okay with it. I don't really like the vinyl concept, but I'm okay with it.
Well, the only reason why that even came up was because of its durability as opposed to just yarn if we should get nailed with some significant rainstorms and the color dying out and bleaching out, material falling down. But again, this is gonna be a live and learn experience.
It'll be a learning experience.
These are going up by May 1st?
I'll make a motion to, I'm sorry to...
That's right, going up by May 1st, right? Between April 25th and May 1st.
Yeah, and I know they're looking for people to give them a call and register to do it. I don't think you need to be a knitter to be able to do it. You just need to have some yarn. And I've already got all the yarn from Second Chance, I'm just telling you that.
You've got it all, eh?
I'll make a motion to approve the yarn bombing request in the downtown areas presented. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
I can't wait to see this. I hope a lot of people participate, it's gonna be cool.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we're gonna move through the agenda to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This first item is a request from the Lions Club with respect to a telescope project. There is a visual, I believe, on the slide. We're gonna have put up here. This is gonna be an amazing opportunity to have a telescope essentially mounted near the lake on the east side, I believe looking west. This did go through the Plan Commission, Planning Commission, and was approved. There was one member that did abstain due to a potential conflict of interest, given that he is a member of the Lions Club. There is a representative from the Lions Club here as well, and there is, there is the image. Yeah, if you wanted to maybe come up and explain a little bit about the project?
Hi, my name's Timothy Anderson. I live at 10797 Pine Shores Drive in Stonehenge Lake, and I'm a member of the Cadillac Lions Club. I'm also district governor for the side of the state for this year. And one of the things I've found is traveling around, I gotta visit 47 clubs, is up in Arcadia, they have one of these viewers. It's actually, binocular viewer is the technical term for it. You find them in a lot of state parks and different sightseeing areas. And the club uses it as a fundraiser. They make about $1,800 a year clearing that, it's a lease agreement. You pay back 40 cents to the company that owns it for every dollar you bring in, and the club still makes about $1,800 a year off it. It's only open for them from May until November because of the winter up there, and the Lions Club could use a good fundraiser in the area here. Back in 2009, we were spending about $1,300 a year on glasses. Now we're spending $13,000 a year on glasses for the area. This is something that would draw people into the area, people will enjoy using it, it's a novelty, and it could enhance the light front area.
They're also going to put one out on the canal?
On the Mitchell side, yes.
Oh, on the other side.
It's currently being negotiated with the DNR, and so far it's passing through channels properly, so...
So where would this go in the, we're not sure exactly where?
We're looking on South Lake Street, crossing the farmer's market, about the third garbage can in. I stopped there last night, had ice cream with my family. There's a nice spot of land there. We need to have, we're having a wheelchair accessible, and we're gonna have a six-foot by five-foot square piece of cement board, and it's mounted in that, so a wheelchair can go completely around it. The head pivots 360 degrees, and it's a good location.
Nice.
Also, from that spot, you can't see anybody else's houses. You can see a little bit of the Four Winds, you can see, that was concerned to play in the vision, for peeping. And you can't peep from that spot.
It's good.
A quarter to get a good view, huh?
For a minute and a half, though, you gotta have a pocketful of quarters.
There were seven conditions that the Planning Commission mentioned as a part of their approval when it went through their process. The recommendation this evening would be to approve the implementation of this binocular
Viewer.
In accordance with those conditions as outlined in the, in the council right up in your packet.
Now, the Lions does have a insurance policy through Lions International, so Lions would accept all liability. And again, like I said, for the conditions, if it ever wants to be taken out by the city, it's gone. If it turns out that it doesn't work out for us, we could remove it also. We would return the area back to natural, we would get rid of the cement if that's what the city wishes, and put it back the way it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the request by the Cadillac Lions Club to place a binocular viewer and mounting pad on city property.
Support.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Moving on to the next item, this is a request for authorization to acquire services for centerline street marking. We did receive bids for centerline marking for streets based on unit prices applied to estimated quantities. The following is the recommendation, which is to move forward with Michigan Pavement Markings LLC. Funds are available in the local street fund, the major street fund. They were the lowest bidder. They are out of Wyoming, Michigan, and the amount is, well, again, it's based upon units, but the amount was $8,220.
The bidding, again, shows a lot of, I know, it's only, it looks like it's only a $2,300 difference, but percentage-wise, it's pretty big, over 25%.
A council member and members of council, I just, again, wanted to be clear, that's an estimate, it's gonna be based upon actual use, you know, of material.
I'd like to make a motion that we award the contract for the centerline street marking for this summer to Michigan Pavement Markings LLC in the amount of $8,220.
Support. I thought that we didn't want to have an exact number in there, that we wanted it to say in accordance with their contract.
That would be preferred.
Or, excuse me, in accordance with the...
In accordance with the amount of material used and we estimated.
And that would have been for all the...
For all.
Yep. So, like, yeah, I'll change that to include in accordance with the contract.
Their bid.
Their bid.
And I will support that.
Something.
Thank you.
As amended.
Could we have a roll call?
Three or four times.
Councilmember Spoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Excuse me, I'm getting a tickle in my throat as well. The next item is with respect to the street improvement projects. As our finance director mentioned a little bit earlier this evening, this was coming. We did have a bid opening on March 28, and the following bids were received, one from Dunbar Excavating, CJ's Excavating, Pete's Contracting, and Elmer's Crane and Dozer, Inc. The recommendation this evening is to award the contract to Dunbar Excavating, Inc. The, Dunbar Excavating, Inc. was the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $469,985. We are also asking, in addition to that bid, to increase it to withstand a 5% contingency accordingly. Funds are available in our various funds, as indicated, as you may... Funds are available in our various funds, as indicated, as you may see in the chart in the packet that lists the various projects and the funds in the total. So the recommendation this evening would be to award the contract for the 2014 street improvement contract to Dunbar Excavating, Inc. of Cadillac, Michigan, in accordance with their bid, including the 5 percent contingency.
I'll make that bid, as stated by Mr. Pecha.
That motion?
I mean, that motion.
Support.
It's contagious.
We know what you want.
Exactly.
Quick, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
It's terrible.
Thank you. The next item is the request to have a public hearing for our annual fiscal year 2015 operating budget set for April 21st at 7:00 p.m. 7:00 p.m. is the regular council meeting. Don't be a part of that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for April 21st at 7:00 p.m. to consider approval of the 2014-15 annual operating budget.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. We then have the minutes of different boards and commissions. This evening, we've been presented with the minutes of the Downtown Development Authority meeting that was held on February 26th, as well as the minutes of the Cadillac Wexford Transit Authority held on February 20th. Okay. At this time, we will go ahead and open the floor again for any public, any additional public comments that anyone would like to share. Not this evening, okay, thank you. Then we'll move to good of the order. And we will start with Councilmember Malama.
I'm trying to catch up on some of the meetings I've missed, and so I'm working through my stack, and I'm getting on top. I have some questions that I'll probably take up with our city manager a little later on. The other thing I wanted to mention is our manufacturers and the county are meeting tomorrow at the city here, and we're going to get an update on the county affairs and the city affairs for our manufacturers, so our manufacturers have a better understanding of our units of government, both city and county. I think that's very, very important, because it has seemed in our society today that both the private sector and the public sector look at each other across the tables, and you never really have a chance to have a dialogue. And I know Mark Howey, who is a county commissioner, has worked very hard on putting this program together along with myself, so I'm very pleased that that's gonna take place tomorrow. I just want to thank the maintenance department or the snow plowing crew for a tremendous job this winter. The amount of overtime that they put in, I'm sure, away from their families, battling the elements, this has been some winter, and we certainly haven't had that January thaw. And I don't even know if we're gonna have an April thaw at this point, but let's keep our fingers crossed. But anyway, once again, please thank your group. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Wanted to give a quick early congratulations to Rick and his wife, as they're preparing for a new child here. And so, this will maybe be one of his more peaceful evenings in a while, but.
For a while.
Wish you well, and your wife, too, please pass that on. Secondly, the march, I wanted to say thank you, all the people that were part of the board of review, to the public, and all those that came and asked questions. And then, I know she's not here tonight, but Carrie Lanning from the city that does an excellent job on behalf of the city, taking the notes and the minutes and such. And I can just echo, again, I'm gonna be doing a little memo to Marcus as well as Owen, just summarizing this year. But again, our equalization department, Joe Porterfield and Don Larkins do an excellent job. It's just amazing what they do on behalf of our city. So, you know, just really to commend them again and our staff for it, I wanted to thank them. And then I was wondering, I was thinking if, more so that we got everybody on the same page, I was wondering if, Mr. Pecha, if you could provide some time to the council. I know there's been questions, and I'm not even sure, you know, when it comes to the grievances that we have and some of the other items that are coming up, what our role is as a council, just to make that clear as to knowing, at least in your eyes, where our role is, as to whether or not we have any say in those or not, so that we have clarity and can at least pass that on as a unified understanding to know if, what our authority is on that, or such as authorizing the expenditures and such, just so that we're all on the same page. That would be greatly appreciated. You know, that would, where it's all in the same format, so we all know on the same level as to what our role is, or if we have any role. Some of them are unique, but, you know, not knowing with this workman's comp, one to the grievances, to the appeal, to the unfair labor, what is, what's the role of council in each of those, if any, would be appreciated.
Okay. Thank you.
Samuel?
Sure.
I don't have very much. There is a Gopher Wood concert this Saturday night at the Alx at 8:00 with a duo called Redtail Ring that is delightful, traditional Americana music. What else? There was one other thing, but I can't remember. Aside from having myxalypxia, my brain seems to have also taken a break. So, thank you, everybody. And thanks to Owen and his staff for all the hard work with putting together the CIP and the budget and all that. This is a really busy time of the year for the numbers guys.
It is.
So appreciate that very much.
Good team.
Yeah.
I wanted to mention that a few weeks ago, Marcus, Pecha, Mayor Philkins, and I were able to go to a Michigan Municipal League Legislative Conference, and it was very informative. It was one of the better conferences that I have been to, and we were able to have a dinner with our representatives, and that was great fun. I learned more about them than I had ever known, and it was really quite enjoyable after a long day. Yeah. And one of the really neat things that happened is we met as a region, because the league puts us into different regions for educational purposes and other things, and we became, I think there was an article in the paper about this, but we won the region's contest for what's called the Race for the Cup. So we are in the running with all of the other region winners in the state for the Race for the Cup, which will be announced in October with our program. I forgot what it's called.
Bike Cadillac.
Bike Cadillac, our free rental bike program that we started last year, using bicycles that had been confiscated by this, you know, for various reasons within the city, and tuned up. I think we partnered with a bike shop to do that and painted, put our decals on them. And then we got the partner out at the state park to actually operate this or operationalize it. And it allows tourists at the state park to rent a bicycle for free and ride a bike around the lake or on our trails into town or whatnot. So that's our project. I know when we implemented it, our intention was to have it, at least my intention was, I can't speak for everybody, was to have this available to the citizens of Cadillac also and have it in the downtown area. So it'd be my hope that we can look at ways to increase that this year. And I think the way to make that really successful is if we could find a partner in the core downtown area that would help us operationalize it. And one of the ideas that somebody suggested, and I think it's a really good one, I haven't talked to them, but is the After 26 Project. If they have any volunteers or some of their staff to be able to do that, they've got a great location. Or maybe the Cadillac Visitors Bureau. I know that this requires volunteers to do, but those are just a couple of ideas. And if there's a way that we could expand this bike program to the core downtown area, that would be great.
Underway.
What's that?
Underway.
Underway.
Set up, in fact, Marcus, we have a meeting set up, so.
We're working on it.
Meeting set up already?
Yes.
So it's really cool that we're in the Race for the Cup. I've had phone calls to my house from people who, you know, from outside of the area who want more information about it, and it was really quite a buzz that day. People were really interested in this program. So, you know, hats off to the state park folks for working with us on that to implement it last year. And then, just to mention that, we did have a really good budget meeting prior to this meeting, and really good discussion on ways to reduce our costs in different areas that we feel that we can. We continue to see declines in revenues, and, you know, we're really operating with much less staff than we ever have before. We've got a lot of roads that need fixing, and so it becomes more and more of a difficult job to come up with a balanced budget. So I think we had some really good frank discussion about some possible ways to do that, and I hope to continue those discussions with the council at our next work session for the budget. Thank you.
Well, I would like to, first of all, start off by thanking Councilmember Stevens for your work with the Board of Reviews. I know for that couple of weeks, that's kind of all-inclusive for you, and so with your leadership and willingness to take on that board, we really appreciate it. And to Councilmember Malama, I am really excited about the opportunity that you've presented for the different groups within the community for that dialogue and education as it relates to our manufacturing, because, you know, per the discussions we had earlier this evening, that growth and those revenues and, you know, having people understand what Cadillac is built on is really important, so thank you. We had a member of our community, our downtown community, pass away this last week, and I just would ask everyone to keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. Mike Townsend from Cadillac Printing passed away, and many of you know him. He was a very, very good man, and so I just wanted to mention that here this evening. And finally, to thank Owen and his staff and all of the department heads for all of the work that you have put into presenting that budget to us. There was a lot of really good discussion this evening, and I know that everyone is focusing on that accountability and what our reality is. And so I, too, look forward to continuing that discussion with all of you, so that we get to a good place. So thank you. With that, we will, we need to adjourn the meeting and have a motion to go into a closed session to discuss a confidential written legal opinion.
Make a motion to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot Marcus. I am so sorry.
No, it's all right.
We've been talking so much this evening, and the good of the order, I forgot you.
No, that's quite okay. I was actually gonna provide this clarification.
Okay.
To go into closed session.
Okay. Well, let's back up just a moment, though. Did you have anything for good of the order? I'm really sorry.
No, it's all right. I was just gonna simply thank members of the City Council for the good discussion as well we had earlier tonight, so.
Okay, good.
Similar process, but we're adding on to it, and I think it's a good thing.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, in the motion, to also read out the name of the case.
Okay, so, all right. So who would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss a confidential written legal opinion with the city attorney, and to discuss specific pending civil litigation in the case of William S. Barnett in his capacity as mayor of the city of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn. Case number 11-23578-CZ.
Thank you.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. I have a motion to bring the council back into open session.
I make a motion to return to open session.
Support.
Sandy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. At this time, then we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.